Okay, I guess we'll get underway. Welcome everybody to our Council meeting of January 18th. We'll move forward with the agenda. Everybody's had a chance to review it. Nothing to add? Can I move forward and get a motion on that? Move by? Oh, yes, I should say, councillor. We have Darren Puddle here on Zoom. You can see he's sitting in his kind of existing chair that he usually is. So, okay. Move by councillor Puddle, second by councillor Cosby. Be resolved, the council of town of Niqwa approved the regular meeting agenda for January 18th, 2022, all in favor? Carry it. And everybody's had a chance to review the last month's minutes. Any errors or omissions? Otherwise, can I move forward with a motion on that? Move by councillor Gerard, second by councillor Joe. Be resolved that the council of town of Niqwa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held December 21st, 2021, and Saturday. All in favor? Carry it. Okay, we have a delegation here tonight. We have Ron Nordstrom speaking on behalf of the Arts Board. So, Ron, come on.
Sure. Put an X word right there.
Sure. I'm retiring the posters in the corner. I know at least one of the posters has a good taste for me and my friends down the hills of whiting at the park, so, yeah. They look great. All right, here we are again, about a year later. At least you forgot who I am, the guy behind the mask. I am Ron Nordstrom, and I am currently the president of Arts Board. I've been the president for a number of years now, but that's... If I took the mask off, you'd see one of those pieces right there. So, just a reminder, you guys have seen this before. It's not a new council. And I reminded that we're a small and, I emphasize, affordable community center. Right now, it'll be 50% physical distancing capacity. We can fit 50 people because our capacity is 100 people. So, we are an affordable gathering place that fits a growing need that our community needs, and we can accommodate it. Because we exist because if you want this, then you gotta have this. If you want the arts, it's got to start somewhere. And that's what we are. We're grassroots arts kind of facility, as well as many, many other things. We're an art gallery, of course, that's in red, that's... People know us by art gallery, but that's all of the other things we are and we do. I'm sure we've missed a few as well. So, we're not a single-purpose kind of facility. However, the reality, I guess, in 2021, for the second year in a row, is we've been frustrated by closures and cancellations. I mean, through no fault of anybody except this darn weird-looking pandemic, coronavirus. However, the good news is since September to about mid-December, we're back to normal. So, we had a really terrific quarter until about a week or so before Christmas, and then things, of course, with the latest on the ground, things dropped off. And we're really hoping to get back to normal at the end of this month. And we were positive that we... Or we're optimistic that we can actually. So, it's been a year of ups and downs, as I'm sure every organization has had their ups and downs just by closure and the pandemic. Our best asset remains to be our people. We have one shiny new paid employee right here. You probably know Yvonne. You've probably met her. Yvonne Cicely has started in September to take over for Rainy behind the camera there when she switched jobs. So, one shiny new paid employee. Now, that's different from what we've had in the past, because in the past, we'd have 1.5 employees without one. And she's doing it all right now. We have a volunteer board, and, of course, we have a core of volunteers. And so, people make the place run. We've been working on this for years now, and our fiscal house is looking pretty good. We're getting it in order. We've actually got a balanced budget for the upcoming year, 2021, '22, with our income and expenses pretty much... Of course, budgets are, as you well know, are always approximations. And so, for example, last year, in 2021, we estimated our income to be about $70,000 and our expenses to be about $70,000. You can see, that was not the case. Our income was greater than we anticipated, and our expenses were less than we anticipated. And so, last year, you can see that we had $52,000... Well, almost $53,000 to the positive, surplus, I suppose, not surplus, I guess. But we had a good year, as many nonprofit organizations like the Yellow Head and many organizations like that had a very good year. So, COVID hurt us in terms of participation and people in the building and just sort of, you know, being able to hold classes and things like that. But with the funding we could apply for, it actually helped us somewhat financially. Now, $52,000 is... I will explain a little bit of that a little bit later. However, one of the things is we have about $11,000 that was supposed to be in last year's budget, where we were supposed to pay for in last year's budget. That was some repairs. The work didn't get done until this year's budget. So, you know, we've got a balanced budget this year. However, there's $11,000 that we were supposed to pay last year that will have to end up coming out of this year's budget. But that's... That explains part of that $53,000 surplus. In reality, you take $11,000 off that, because that will have to be used for things that were done this year. Now, notice that balanced budget is anticipating some sort of equal grant that we got from last year from the town of Niqwa. Okay? So, even though our rental income was down, donations were down, sponsorships, all of those things that we normally make as money were down, COVID relief really helped us. We've got... We received approximately $26,000 worth of COVID relief funding. So, that combined with reduction in salaries due to layoffs and/or reduced hours last year. So, we went from 1.5 employees to 1 employee to hard time to eventually laying off. And so, that reduction really accounts for that, that once-in-a-lifetime kind of surplus. In 2022, we have moved, this fiscal year, we have moved from 1.5 employees to 1 employee. And we're working with that. So, again, reducing our costs in that way, and we'll try that out, see how that works. In addition, we do have a sponsorship program for businesses, and we've got different levels there for businesses that pay part. We didn't get that much uptake last year. We didn't really... It was really hard to go out and ask for sponsorships when our doors were not open. But now that our doors are open again, we'll be looking for those kinds of things again. We also have a patrons program for individuals. And even though we really weren't open much last year, many people still participated in the patrons program. We still get dollars from that. And we certainly have, since September, got a lot of dollars from that again. So, those are other ways that we're looking to balance our budget and relying on to balance our budget. We've done some recent improvements. If you've been in there, you've seen the hardened flooring in the main gallery, Northroom, as we finished. That is very noticeable. We've been painting the walls and doing everything we can to make that room look good. And it never looked good until we finally refinished the floors. The floors just made it look bad before, so it looks great now. We've also... Another major project that cost a few bucks here was installing the siding on a storage shed. So, those are the two things that I mentioned, $11,000 that we were hoping would come out of last year's budget. Well, people didn't get it done until this year's budget, so that has to be paid this year. We've also reorganized the office space and created a boutique again. We used to have a boutique in there, and we've got that back again to promote local artists. So, if you've been in there, you may have noticed that. What next? Other things we need to do in the building. We are in the process right now of painting the foyer in the main entrance. We need to replace the front doors. They don't close properly. They don't secure properly. Don't tell anybody this. We need to replace the flooring in the main entrance, the boutique in the office. It's been there since, probably, since the building was erected a long time ago, but certainly it's outlived its usefulness right now. There's also written, "We need to replace flooring in the basement hallway, the back stairs." We need to paint and carpet studios 1, 4, and 5, make improvements to our sound system and paint dishes. So, you can see, there's lots of things we need to do. Those are the things that we can see. There's things that, of course, emergencies that come up all the time. For example, if our furnace stopped tomorrow, wow, that would be scary and expensive. So, you know, we don't count things like that in the what next. If our roof started leaking, that's not counted in the what next. So, you know, there's those potential kinds of things as well. And we're working to pay off the mortgage. If things go as predicted and planned, by the end of next year, by... Actually, by this time next year, we should have our mortgage paid off. So, yeah, that's what we're busy doing, trying to be fiscally responsible. Our funding, this is last year's funding, just to give you a little bit of a breakdown, but that $93,000 came in. You can see a big chunk, $25,831 was COVID relief. We got our normal money from the province, which is about 31, well, almost $32,000. And our earned revenues were way, way down. We were barely open last year, so that explains that. That's why it's only 12.5% of our income last year. It's normally much higher than that. There's a breakdown there. So, Arts Forward, how does that fit with the council objectives? Let's take a look. We're looking at a grant that can be... The community grant programs, it's your policy here. And in red, the top paragraph, "We're part of an organization..." I guess a network organization that contributes to wellness and vitality in our community. "We're also an organization that provides valuable community service, supporting the council's objectives, strategic plan, and vision." In particular, the objectives of the grant program, the two that are in red there, "Enhance the quality of life for residents, businesses, and visitors." We believe that our facility does those kinds of things. It is one of the many facilities in town that enhances quality of life and also provides a service to town that otherwise delivers given act of resources. That's an assumption that we are making, et cetera. So, some of the services the town might deliver, I think you have a budget line called Recreation, Arts, and Culture. And recreation is free time that people spend away from everyday responsibilities, so not work and not domestic tasks. So, it includes things like sport, playing music, dancing, yoga, visiting museums, et cetera, et cetera, on this list. And Arts Forward fulfills a recreational need as well as an arts and culture need. So, we think we fit in really well with the town's objectives. And the goals here, one of the goal, your goals and mission is to support a quality lifestyle. And you've seen this next slide before. I won't spend too much time on it, but we talked about, or I've talked about how the quality of lifestyle in a community involves essential and nonessential services, and artistic and cultural activities are part of that nonessential services. They are what make a community a great place to live, all those nonessential services. And we're only a piece of it. Obviously, restaurants and those shopping opportunities, those kinds of things are important as well. But events as well, like Louis Rael Day, National Truth and Reconciliation, things like that, those are all part of quality lifestyle. So, we think Arts Forward supports quality lifestyle. Sport in a community only serves a small part of the population. Arts Forward programming, cultural events serve, we believe, a wider population. We fulfill the need for arts, cultural experiences. We have inclusive programming and all of these things, like health and wellness, arts, culture, music. Theater, our summer theater program, should we be able to run it again for kids? And it's a great program. So, we offer a lot of different recreation, arts, and culture activities. And the grant we're specifically applying for is the Direct Rewards Grant, and some criteria that it will refer to services on behalf of the town. We think that's what we're doing. And it's a community operating grant, and so that's the category that we fit into. Now, we have a number of partners, including, I guess, the town of Niqwa, but these are... We're not living in isolation. We don't exist in isolation over there. And we've had a lot of partners in the past, and this year, we've increased our number of partners. And so, you can see that there's quite a list here, including a number of local businesses. And we're out working to expand the number of businesses that get involved. So, these are people that are organizations or businesses that we've partnered with in the past and hopefully in the future. So, how would a town grant assist Arts Forward? Well, certainly assist us with their annual programming, try and keep costs portable for our users. Help us with cultural events, like, for example, National Truth and Reconciliation Day or United Nations Day. Those are some of the things we have planned for this year. Our days off school program, so when the schools are closed for in-service or whatever, we have programming in those days for students. So, parents have a place to drop off their kids and have them learn a new skill. For example, Kids in Kitchen is one example of something like that, where we've done cooking at Arts Forward. We also need additional chairs... Oops, tables. The main entrance doors are an issue, the flooring. And obviously, with whatever grant we get, we're not going to be able to do all of these things. We're going... These are wish lists kinds of things, unless you really surprise us. These are wish lists, and we can do some of these things, but we're just, you know, we have to prioritize all, obviously. So, just a bit of the funding history. Last year, last couple of years, it's $15,000. We also received a property tax exemption from the town of Niqwa, so that's just a quick little history there. You can see Tony Tam receiving about $12,000. Things change along the way, and we're getting a little bit more now, so it's great. And of course, our eggs are in not one basket, there are many baskets. We don't just look at one grant. We're looking... These are all the things that we're looking at for grants. And we've recently received, Rob Smith &amp; Son, a $2,500 grant. So, those kinds of things are included. So, these are grants we either received or have applied for and hope to receive this So, I'm going to go quick this year. The big ask. So, we are asking for a similar investment as last year, $15,000. That allows us to balance our budget, subsidize our programming, purchase a few chairs, install some flooring, and maybe replace the front doors. We'll have to figure out our priorities once we have our money in place, but those are some of the things that we're looking at this year. So, questions or comments? You want to answer questions?
When are your open mic nights?
That's a good question. And the last one we have was in... No, it's actually December. Yeah, last one ended in December. But all depends on when we're allowed to open, who's allowed to be there. So, yeah. We've had, I believe, three since September.
And we're not just going to stick with open mic. We're actually going to start having karaoke nights, too, so that we can bring in more of a universal demographic that we fly into our facility for them. So, those will be free to come in, and then we're going to tie that into United Nations Day. So, we plan on doing one a month, and then each one will be a different country, things food for sale, and entry will just be a non-perishable food item, so we can relate that to salvation.
She's got lots of plans. Yeah, we've got tons of activities going on. And, you know, most of it hinges around what's going on with the pandemic. And we were open for full business for a couple of months and then kind of shut down, kind of waiting for things to open up again, so we can start offering programming and things like open mic and whatever. Okay, yeah, no, thank you, Ron. I mean, we get lots of grant applications every year, but we get very few people that actually come to the table to ask for their grants and to explain why they want their grant. So, we really appreciate that.
Show us their home pictures.
I'd love to talk to you. We need your financial statements. It looks like you guys have really turned your organization around. You're really heading in the right direction. I love that idea, you have a pay-out award. That's a great idea. Yeah, so, yeah, I see it's gaining, it's the $15,000, which would be a third year in a row, right? So, it's getting to be a little bit like a line in our grant budget, so...
That's a good idea.
Yeah. I know you've mentioned that before, so... Anyhow, no, that's great. Last of any other questions? All right. We appreciate you coming down. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I guess we'll get back to our regular meeting, and we are down to council reports. Who has a council report? Councillor Cosby, sorry.
Sure. So, yesterday, I met with the county band, the community, and we had a meeting. Ridership was still very low, basically because of the pandemic. The trips that were taken for 2021 were 3,322 trips, and that's 25,786 kilometers. To give you an idea, 2020 was 3,092 trips, and the year before that, like 2019, was almost 10,000 trips. So, that shows you the last two years have been really low. In saying that, that also shows a deficit of $22,450 for 2021. And that was broken up between municipalities and the town of Niqwa. We are responsible for 60%, which is $13,530. North Cypress Langford is 12% at $2,706. Glenelagh Lansdowne, the same amount at 12%, and Rosedale, 16% at $3,608.3. And we are currently interviewing. It's a program that we applied for, maybe you explained it last time, and that is still ongoing. So, when that is finalized, hopefully, we have some wonderful news of new and improved things for the county band, so we'll be forward to it.
Hopefully, COVID might be over.
And if COVID will be over, it will get easier. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councillor Perry.
I just have a parts tray of stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so, as you read the paper, the clinic rose, raised $168,000 through the clinic meeting, through the Farm Leader Lottery. And to continue with that, there needs to be letters of support from all the partnering municipalities, which will be coming up later in our role program. If you wish to make donations for the regional hospital, extras, $20 plus, we'll receive receipts. Ongoing, we have Madco, Equalon Area Development Corporation, which we do lots of wonderful little things, include owning the clinic. We'll be sending out invoices for $2,500 to the cooperating municipalities to keep that program going as well. We also have a doctor recruitment fund that has been a great idea that the municipalities in the area also support, and is one of the... One of the many reasons why we have so many nice doctors in Niqwa and such a great health And about the location of the hospital, stop asking. The province will let us know someday.
That was someday, right? That's someday.
Someday, yeah. Can you hear me, too?
Yeah, yes, I am. I'm older than you.
Okay? And yes, we've had snowfall. So, get out there and help your neighbors clean the driveway, and then we won't have phone calls. And we're also in the planning stage for the sewer and water line renewals, and we're not just looking at next year for the town of Niqwa. We are looking at the town of Niqwa for the next 20 to 15 years. That is one of the great things about our town staff and council, is we're not thinking about today and tomorrow. We're thinking about the way ahead to come. And the report.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else have a report? Councillor Gerard.
Yes, I asked to play Metz on Monday, the 17th. We have opened up the grant requests, and have started that review process and started budget planning for 2022 to 2023. That's where we're at.
Okay, all right. Early days.
Early days.
Yeah. Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Joe.
Through the Rossburn Trail Association, we met the first week of January, and not a lot to report based on Niqwa, but the trail itself. We continue to apply for grants with the Trail to Canada, and we want to keep improving the recreational abilities for us in and around our community. So, we keep applying, and we keep getting successful. And we're finding that more and more as we include projects that include biking, outdoor walking and biking. You're very successful. So, definitely, in hindsight, you know, our plan to have our bike, our bike park was really a good thing. On another committee that I sit on, the Justice Committee, Spruce Plains Justice Committee, we continue to receive more referrals, and we continue to meet, and we continue to help support on that side. So, there.
Okay, thank you. And I think that's it for council reports. Okay, we will move forward with management of operations today.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, some of the projects that we're working on right now, we've been working on for a while, the RCNT is still on schedule. May seem like slow progress, but there's quite a work going, and inside it can't really be seen. And probably by the end of the month, we should see most of our structure, external structure, ported off so that they can now start the interior, maybe throw a little bit of heat in there, roof structure. So, all those are moving along nice. The water treatment plant reservoir, same thing, it may seem slow, but they got most of the concrete poured. I believe they're pouring the last floor slab, which would be the roof, tomorrow, and then they should start the structure again to cover up the pumper. Regarding Park Lake, so we have two tenders that were issued out, additional, so those were issued out to local contractors. One is for tree scrubbing as part of the town reconstruction, and the other was for the riprap placement or supplies, right? Both of those were awarded out, so Rob Smith &amp; Son achieved both contracts, and we have, I think, three beds on each side, so they're good beds. And snow. So, staff started a little later than they wanted, just because it took a little while for that snow to stop. So, once they did get out their contract, but as well, they're still out there right now, so we ask just that residents be patient, move vehicles when they can, that way facilities are cleaning early. And same with the sidewalks, we're doing our best, but everything kind of blew in. They're cleaning as it's still snowing, so we'll be doing it early in the second round again, and we're working on that. And on Redo, for those of you that are looking for jobs, our summer positions have been posted. So, anyone that's out looking for summer employment, resumes and applications, can you fill it up and drop it off?
Okay, perfect. So, can you go just go back to Park Lake, the meeting? So, I was at one of those meetings. So, if I understood correctly, next week, they are starting about bringing...
Maybe there's some permitting issues right now.
Okay.
That we're going to slow things down. They're going to try to facilitate that and come around some solutions. So, best case, next week, but we're not too sure. Those issues have all been resolved yet.
So, Mibby, could you explain how this is going to work? Say it's next week or the week after. How would that work? Because they're going to go down Brown Avenue.
Yes, so we're going to see trucks, Monday to Friday, coming in. It'll be... It'll be a... Get out my charts and date, but...
We were thinking maybe three to five.
Yeah.
Six loading, six trucks.
So, it's not going to be too bad during working hours, kind of deal with someone that's away, you shouldn't even really notice it. We'll build a down ramp, and they'll drive into the basin and stockpile.
Okay, and they were talking maybe four to six weeks, right? About five days a week.
Yeah, so we'll see how they're scheduling. They might map it up. They might work two extra hours. I think once they start rolling, and see how else we can decide on that.
Yeah, I mean, it's great news. It's exciting, even if it just wanted the public to be aware that those trucks will be rolling down there, so... Yeah, councillor Gerard.
My one, only concern I have with trucks on Brown is enforcing a speed limit. We know heavy truck can roll down that hill. Is there anything we can do to ensure that we're not going to see truck, increase truck speeds in there? I know 50 kilometers is our speed limit, but I'm really near a risk of that, considering there's no sidewalks on Brown with trucks rolling down that street. I want that material there to get Park Lake repaired, but we also have to hold those I don't want that material there to get parkway repaired, but we also have to hold those drivers accountable now that they are running through a residential area. And I would, I would actually like to see 30 kilometers posted on them when they are rolling through that neighborhood with trucks.
That's something we need to discuss with the contractor and go over that and ensure it hits all their safety meetings.
Because that, that is a huge concern. I, I know as a person in that area, there is a ton of walkers on that hill and it is blind. And especially even those vehicles coming around that corner on the ground by the water treatment plant. It is narrow and I've seen a lot of near misses there already. So the tracks rolling at any kind of speed, it is a bit of a concern. But like I said, I know every resident on that street also wants to see Park Lake back. So we're prepared to work with that, but it's, the safety concern is real in, in that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's a good comment. Okay. Okay, anybody else? Okay.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, next, we have our economic development officer, Aaron Drew. Can he give us a report?
Thank you. So this is my 2021 year end report. It's always fun to give it, but there's a lot of positive news in here. So over the course of 2021, Niqwa saw eight new business starts, two business transitions, and two business expansions. Certainly, development around housing was, was positive through the year. We've seen the opportunity to, to develop the 46 lots on the CN land. Crescent Creek Development is working away. The Cameron Apartment broke ground in 21. And the Howden Town Homes are all foundations and, and going. So that certainly has shown huge impact on our housings, will show a huge impact on our housing stock over the next two years. The, the business development side was also good due to the announcement of the hotel construction. Certainly, the hospital announcement in December is a huge, has a huge impact over the next five years and beyond for us around construction and trades, but also attraction of professional and medical sector staff. And ongoing pressure on our housing market as we look to staff up for a larger facility. A storefront improvement incentive program finished its three-year pilot with positive numbers. So that program will continue into 2022 and beyond. Rapid test kits were distributed to our local businesses. We saw 3,750 rapid test kits handed out to support our community COVID response. What's the big idea? Saw five entrepreneurs walk away with $9,150 in cash and prizes. It's been a very successful event. Niqwa Tourism benefited from grants through Travel Manitoba because of COVID. So that's been really positive for them. They really had a chance to do some impactful work in the community because of those grants. Two, two new events were hosted in 21, the Riverbend Market and then the Drive-In Movie, and both of those saw Niqwa Tourism give back to community groups. So that was positive, impacted the community beyond the day of the event. The tourism banners were installed along Mountain this summer. And I think that just added a nice splash of color. And we will continue to work on more of those banners as we have grant money to do it. Working away with partnerships with the Chamber and the Yellowhead Investment Corridor. Another application was submitted through Paramount and Health for an ALPAN program in towns. We're waiting to see whether we might get that nursing program held locally. And just looking to 22, it's, it's, it's a very positive horizon right now. And I just think that we continue to look at the community inclusively, making decisions. And it just brings new growth and supports the businesses we already have.
Thank you, Mary. Any questions, any comments? I know it's a great time to be ready, all right? We have so much going on and lots to talk about. Thank you. Okay, we are going to move forward with the council for December. Everybody's had a chance to review the accounts. We move forward with the motion on that. Move by Council Director. Second by Deputy Mayor Head. Be resolved, they're re-approved accounts for December 2021, totaling $1,766,610.43 as reviewed in representing check 2021 CO2 175 to 2021 02426, but excluding 2021 102339. All favor, chair. Okay, Deputy Mayor Head is going to excuse himself for conflict. We're going to move forward with the account on Niqwa. When I get a motion on that, move by Council Perry. Second by Council Costin. Be resolved, they're reapproved, check number 2021 0242339 through December 2021. The Niqwa House on Niqwa, only $2,332.70. All favor, chair. Okay, moving on to the 2022 tax sale. I think that's just an item that we have to move forward on, correct? It's just on the properties that are in our rear. So can I move forward with the resolution on that? Move by Council Costin. Second by Council Dado. Be it resolved that we hereby designate 2021 as the year which properties and arrears will be offered for sale by way of public auction. And be it further resolved that the tax sale be held November 2nd, 2022 at 2:00 PM in the council chambers of the town of Niqwa at 275 Hamilton Street, Niqwa, Manitoba, with tax service appointed to manage the tax sale and conduct the proceedings on behalf of the town. All favor, chair. Okay, we're getting to the medical clinic lottery, just to get that done again, right? Are you speaking to that right?
Well, so part of the rules for hosting the Farm Leisure Lottery is that we need to guarantee the prize. So the surrounding municipalities who are involved in the clinic committee all give a letter of support saying they'll cover the prize should we not sell enough tickets. Not today, that has never been the case. We've always sold enough tickets to pay for the prize and to have money left over. And of course, as pre-announced before, 168,000. And if we have another successful year like that, next year the clinic will be a four and we can start working on the next project.
Well, pretty safe.
Might be, what the heck, an urgent care center.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by Council Director. Second by Deputy Mayor Head. Whereas the Niqwa District Medical Committee, as represented by municipal jurisdiction of Niqwa, Glenelg Lansdowne, North Cypress Langford, and Rosedale, will be filing an application to obtain a charitable gaming license as part of their annual fundraising efforts in 2022 to sustain and improve health services for the community and surrounding areas. Therefore, be it resolved that based on the contributions sharing agreement, the council for the town of Niqwa agreed to financially support the committee in their efforts to secure a license and raise money for the Niqwa District Wellness Center in 2022. All favor, chair. Okay, we've got a discussion on memory of Niqwa swimming pool and admission rates. And Colleen, you're going to talk to us about that?
So just very quickly, on your agenda is some attachments from our recreation individual, Nicole Cooper. Rather than read every specific line of what the increase would be, it's on aggregate a 5% increase. So 25 cents to depending what the programming is. So 5%. And just a note that prices really have been increased since 2016. And in 2019, there was a change, not necessarily an increase, but we actually moved non-residentally from the pricing. So this would be the most significant, which isn't that significant, increase since 2016. Roughly 5%.
Okay, thank you. I mean, that seems pretty straightforward. 16, that's six years. That's less than 1% a year if you want to look at it that way. So yeah, it's really a very fair-minded increase, I would suggest. Any questions, any comments? Can we forward, move forward? Should we move forward with that resolution? Move by. Aaron Bro. Council Valo. Second by Deputy Mayor Head. Be resolved that we approve the 2022 admission rates for the Niqwa swimming pool attached as scheduled eight. All favor, chair. Okay, Colleen, appointing a senior election official.
Well, as we all know, this is election year in October of the 26th. So starting the process already, it'd be very minimal attention given at this point in time, but we've held the elector's list. We're going to start revising that. But the ability to post ads under some authority starts with you appointing a senior election official. So I'm asking you to appoint you for the election.
Okay, move forward with that resolution. Move by Council Costin. Second by Council Perry. Whereas Section 10-1 of the Municipal Council's School Board's Election Act requires each municipal municipality to appoint a senior election official, SEO, who will be responsible to manage and conduct all aspects of the 2022 municipal election. Therefore, be resolved, Colleen, in addition to be hereby appointed to the position of SEO for the town of Niqwa for the 2022 municipal election. All favor, chair. Okay, and we're on to a sale of property. Colleen.
So this is a request that came in a number of months back. We had a subject in the process go through by Dustin Hoffman. And as part of that application, it was identified with town of Niqwa with a very small sliver of land basically to the self of their property. And when looking at that particular piece of land, there was a discussion here whether we deemed it valuable for use for development of any sort. It really serves a purpose in support of development and result in the vision. So they've actually approached us and wanted to know if we'd be interested in selling that small sliver to them. Because part of the development agreement we created when we subvented that property was that they were actually using it as an access point to their, to their building there. And we were requiring them to relocate their access. So for simplicity, we're not using it anyway. It's really harming us that they were using it. And they came back and done, we've done a little bit of negotiation based on assessment value, based on, you know, what, what we would be gaining some tax based on it as opposed to sitting there. So we're recommending council to, so consider the purchase price of $8,700 plus all the fees in, in actually closing the transfer of that property to them if you deem that sufficient.
Any questions, any comments? I guess the discussion we had and the appaisance value of the property. So I think we're comfortable and ready to move forward with that resolution. Move by Council Director. Second by Deputy Mayor Head. Be it resolved, they're reapproved, the sale of block two, block four, plans 6965 and Southeast 32-14-15 W to Dustin Hoffman, Sheriff Susti, Yelken Windows, in the amount of $8,700, subject to the purchaser being responsible for all associated costs to give effect to the sale or transfer of the title. All favor, chair. Okay, Colleen, 2022 accessibility plan.
So this dates back to 2013 when the accessibility commandment was passed. The municipality has to abide by the legislation and create opportunities for making sure public buildings are accessible. This does not just apply to municipalities, actually it's customer service in general across the community. They look for, I guess, at the first onset of making sure the government is creating those accessible opportunities. So even now, we, whenever we look at a project, we try to figure out, are we accessible to people that have, you know, limitations? Are we putting barriers in their way so they can't get in? So we actually passed a policy, our accessibility plan passed in 2017. We did it based on some community input and some, several meetings and interest groups that came for participating in that. We are actually, we passed a three-year plan at that point in time. So this is just the review we would complete every three years as required by the legislation to make sure we are current and update. So we've just updated our plan to show all the progress we've made to date and possible actions we will be taking in the future. For example, when we look at our, our new project at Riverbend and how we're going to readdress access to washrooms, access to our pool, maybe a new pool building at some point, or at least improvements to make it accessible to the public. There is a single project in town now that we don't look at from the viewpoint as of can people get in, no matter whether they're in a wheelchair or a walker or whatever. We've done even, you know, some markings on sidewalks and whatnot to make sure, you know, people who are either visually impaired or hearing impaired, that there's things in place. So we've got a long ways to go, but it all starts with analyzing what you have and what we don't have and making sure everybody can get to where you need to be. So this is just an update for 2022 to 2024.
Okay, thank you. Move forward with that resolution?
Oh, I have a question, sorry. So some of the facilities that we currently own, are we going to put them under any kind of a date where we have to bring them under accessibility? I think, as an example, one of our most historic buildings in the community is the county courthouse. And we definitely have an accessibility issue there. Because that building operates in our community and we are 50% owner and contributor, is that something that we're going to have to make sure we bring them to the full, under the accessibility?
I'm going to say yes. If you're using it for any particular purpose where the public has access, which they do, you have to make that building accessible. It doesn't mean you have to go, you know, write to the mass and spend mega dollars. It means you provide accommodation or create a scenario where you're not putting yourself in undue hardship to be able to make it accessible.
Can you make the recommendation that we serve the county courthouse and its partners with this application so that they're aware now that we have to bring this building in?
Yeah, so this is our plan.
Yes.
Just so you know, the partners should also have a municipality of plan.
Because that building operates within our municipality, I think, I think we ought to take maybe the leading role on that.
Is it, please, Susti?
Yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by Council Bill. Second by Council Director. Be it resolved that we reapproved updates to the accessibility plan for the town of Niqwa for the years 2022 to 2024. All favor. Okay, Colleen, moving on to the vaccination plan that a couple of us have just to look at.
So admittedly, we dragged our feet a little bit on this. I guess it's very hard to come up with a very strong, being the community that puts forward the first policy in the province of Manitoba. We all know the brand Winnipeg, the bigger communities have put forward a policy on whether employees should or shouldn't be vaccinated. This policy doesn't suggest they should or they shouldn't. This policy basically stipulates how are we going to function? How are we going to operate? What are we going to do as a council and a staff here to make sure we can sustain operations should, you know, pandemic roll through our employee base? So basically, it's a plan that says that, you know, you have to show us. And we, we're not collecting information from anybody. You can say you're not going to disclose, but we need to know our employees vaccinated or not. Because it also affects, you know, if you have a pool that is or isn't, it affects how you deem their return to work or their length of time that they would be off or trying to make sure everybody's safe. So basically, the policy will stipulate that should you not be vaccinated, if that's what we find out at the end of this, there will be a requirement for testing to make sure you are safe. We are following all public health orders and it speaks to that in the policy. So we are doing nothing that the provinces hasn't already deemed as reasonable and are already starting to be put in place by other municipalities. The importance of also doing this is the fact that trying to get some access to rapid testing kits as well is starting to get tied to whether you've actually put in place some policy and you're looking at trying to manage your staff and manage this pandemic within your organization as a jurisdiction of government. So I'm sure you've all read the policy. We think we've gone through it several times. Nobody will get laid off should they choose to vaccinate or not. That we're looking at how we manage our staff, how we do it safely is basically what our policy is.
Council Director, I think that was important, this, this policy came forward. We did see different suggestions come from different levels of government as to what requirements were in the because the council, the resources committee, we deemed that we did not think termination would be a part of a policy regarding vaccination and that is not within this policy in any way, shape, or form.
Yeah, no, I agree too. I think, yeah, I think we made a good decision. We've encompassed everybody's beliefs in this and as Colleen said, everybody's going to be safe, so.
It was a special consideration too, when we started thinking we'll get, I mean, you take the rural split versus the urban split. And, you know, especially we have, the example I can give is the case of to be a volunteer fire department. I don't know, you know, what it is there, but, you know, those expectations. We've got to make sure we've got people there that can show up in the event of a fire emergency. So that's really important that we address this.
I think the bottom line, we're doing enough to judge here.
Yeah.
It really isn't our business. A person reads something, that's a choice.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, good, thank you. If that's on the House, we'll move forward with our resolution. Move by. Councilor Perry. Second by Councilor Costin. Be it resolved that we hereby approve policy AB-110 regarding COVID-19 vaccination. All favor. Carry. Okay, last, Colleen, updating a policy at Evergreen on construction and demolition.
So, um, the construction and demolition policy, we had in place actually since 2014. Uh, or it's actually vaguer than that. In 2014, Evergreen decided they would do $40 a ton for tipping charges for construction and demolition waste. Uh, that was increased at, uh, and I don't remember what year, I think it was 17, possibly, to $75 a ton. Uh, it is a significant amount of money to dig a new cell out there. Something like 800 to a million dollars to dig a new cell out there. So when you take, uh, residential gardens out to Evergreen and, you know, the amount of tons it would happen to go up there a year. We have a program in place and if, and we actually have a special service levy, we have these taxes to cover that cost base. What is very hard to determine in a year is how much construction and demolition waste goes out there. So anybody that actually cakes any out there is, uh, or has been assessed at $75 per ton, because it's like a cost recovery. So when you're using a greater amount of the cell out there to put your waste, so then you should pay, uh, a little bit, uh, a premium based on taking that construction and demolition waste out there to contribute towards the, the annual costs or of digging a new cell. So, uh, Evergreen, I guess, has reviewed their numbers out there based on what it costs for operator time and, uh, construction of new cells. And they deemed it necessary to increase that tipping fee to $80 a ton as opposed to 75. So as much as the policy looks a little different, it's just been brought up to speed to what our new format looks like and the change being, uh, the fact that it's going from $75 to $80.
Yeah, no, it's very small increase. Uh, any questions, any comments? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by. Councilor Costin. Second by Deputy Mayor Head. Be it resolved that we approve an update to the construction and demolition policy in version dash dash O2 to renumber the policy as OP-015 and increase the tipping charge for construction and demolition waste from $35 a ton to $80 a ton that is set forth by Evergreen Environmental Technologies Inc. All favor. Carry. Okay, we're down to other business hanging in. If anyone wants to discuss that before we adjourn? Okay. And I guess we will move forward with the adjournment. Move by.
Darren Hall.
Councilor Bylaw. Second by Councilor Costin. Be it resolved that council of town, Niqwa, do not adjourn the regular meeting. Council, uh, uh, 855, 755, yeah. All favor.